Okay, we're back in session. Next item on the agenda, item ten, under consensus items. Item, uh...
Item, uh, consensus items.
B, Personnel Opinion, Dr. Willmers.
Thank you, Ms. Chairman. We request the Board to approve the Personnel Matters as presented.
Second.
Comments or questions?
I just want to say, I was delighted to see the amount of bus drivers that we were able to hire.
Yes.
And that we didn't lose that many in this month's category. But I know it's a challenge, but we are grateful that they're with us.
Now, when sure are.
I just also wanted to point out, Dr. Markley, in his report Thursday, talked about the turnover rate. And that among the, with the exception of one school system, among the major school systems, we had the lowest turnover rate of any of those school systems. So, I had, I had several people ask me about turnover, 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 and to say that it's right at eleven. I think it was eleven points.
We're one point higher than last year.
Okay.
Uh, one of the areas you saw the big jump in was number of teachers who left but stayed in the profession and went someplace else.
Other states mostly.
Yeah. And I will tell you, I think there were fifty-one as of that report. That number's probably jumped to over sixty at this point. We're still, we lost one person this week heading into the private sector because they can do better there than they can here. That was an E.C. teacher at one of our middle schools. So, we're still, we're seeing that. My big concern with turnover, not the short-term effect, is when you look at the number of kids entering education as a major, as a freshman.
Right.
That number is down across the UNC system. I've seen reports by as much as fifty percent. So, in four years, five years, we're gonna, we're gonna be looking, we're gonna be struggling to find teachers in certain hard-to-fill areas.
I just wanted to point that out though because, I mean, I, you hear so often that, oh, you've got a turnover rate, you've got a turnover rate. And the fact is that we do not have a major turnover rate in this school system.
Dr. Willmers Department worked hard to try to, to help us with that.
Thank you.
Well, I think the trend has been trending down.
Yep.
As far as those going into education. But I think that, I really think the state is seeing the light, so to speak. And with, I think what they're gonna do in the future, as far as pay increases for those in education, I think we'll, we'll see a change there.
Well, I think also one of the changes, I mean, you know, I keep saying the thing about charter schools was they were supposed to be an incubator for new ideas. And while I think having an education degree is important, I suspect at some point in time it's going to come that lateral entry in certain areas such as math, science, may have to be allowed without mandating that they go through education classes.
That could be one of the changes that could be coming. Uh, let's see, we had a motion and a second. All the, any other questions, comments? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Posed, approved. Item C, Budget Amendments. Item I, Mayor Hazel Small.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I request the Board's approval of the amendment to the Other Restricted Revenue Fund.
Move for approval.
Seven.
Questions? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Posed, approved. Item eleven, Old Business. Item A, Policies for Second Reading. Mrs. Nichols.
We have six policies tonight. Four are, three are from the Operations Department. Policy forty-one hundred, Safety. Policy forty-one ten, Disaster Plan. And Policy forty-two fifty, Traffic and Parking Controls. So, I ask that we approve these unless you have concerns or questions.
Second.
Do you want to do the...
We'll do them, yes, we'll do the operations, then we'll do the...
The four thousand, uh...
Series first, please.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any questions? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Posed, approved.
The, from the Division of Human Resources, we have three policies. They are for second reading. Policy sixty-one ten, Employment Status. Sixty-two ten, Assignment and Transfer of Staff. And sixty-three, fifty-five, Evaluation of Licensed Personnel. And move that we accept these, or approve these.
Second.
Motion, second. Any questions? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Posed, they are approved.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And I will report that the Policy Committee met today, and we have several that will be coming for first reading in December.
Thank you, Ms. Nichols. Item twelve, Under New Business. Item A, Tariff and Software Soul Source Resolution. Appendix K, Dawn Brinson.
Request that the Board approve the Tariff and Software Soul Source Resolution. It is a race to the top purchase.
Move for approval.
Second.
Questions?
Just for my own edification, what is a B-Bot?
It's a little robot that looks like a bee. It's pretty cool.
What does it do?
The goal is to teach elementary kids how to do programming. And they, that's how they start. You know, you start the lower lids, you know, so the bees...
Do you rent them to adults?
...for your kindergarten, first grade. And then there's a turtle for the upper elementary level.
That's pretty cool.
I mean, you looked it up, didn't you?
Yeah, I saw him at one of the National School Board Associations about two years ago. And the wonderful thing about it was, is that, as the presenter said, it never gets frustrated. I mean, you know, he can have to do the same thing over and over and over again with a, with a student, and it never gets frustrated or mad at the student.
Gregory is outfitting their STEM lab very nicely with stuff. So, I'm sure once Ms. Holling gets it up and going, she'd welcome anybody who wants to come visit. They are doing all kinds of wonderful little projects there with the kids with their STEM lab.
Yeah, let me know, let me know when it comes in. I'd like to go see it.
Will do.
Any other questions? Those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Posed, it's approved. Thank you. Item B, Renewal, Renewal of Property Insurance. Appendix L, Ms. Hans.
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Request that the Board approve the property renewal, PPI property insurance.
Move for approval.
Second.
Questions? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Posed, approved. Thank you. Item C, Earthwalk Soul Source Resolution. Appendix M, Dr. Smith.
Yes, would request that the Board approve the Earthwalk Soul Source Resolution. This cart will be placed at Virgo Preparatory Academy for the C.T.E. Project Lead the Way program.
Move for approval.
Second.
Questions?
Just to note, this Project Lead the Way is sort of the next, was it what we have at Trask? And so, Virgo's the next school to pick that project up. We've had some great results there, so we're looking forward to that at Virgo.
So, Trask has already gotten...
Trask is in her second year.
They've got their, right, okay.
Any other questions?
I guess the only question I have, it's, it's really for Dawn. During your presentation, you were talking about, you know, many schools taking their laptops off of carts. Can we, can we not use one of, I mean, are they gonna, I mean, do we need all these carts if we're not going to be using them as carts per se?
Um, yep. The reason why we put them in there is for the online testing. So, they will still be used as carts, and they're keeping them. This is just a temporary solution until we can get those desktops back in the classrooms. You know, I was just telling them to think outside the box, whatever the best, you know, way they're gonna be able to get things done. And so, some were going to do that. But they're gonna keep them as carts. And so, once they get their desktops back, they'll put them back in carts and be using them that way. They still break them up some for centers, like in K one, two classrooms.
Any other questions? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Posed, approved. Item D, School Improvement Plan Executive Summary twenty-fourteen, fifteen. Appendix N, Dr. Smith.
Yes, the executive summaries, also known as the Instructional Improvement Plans for each school, identifies goals that are agreed upon by the staff that are the high-yield behaviors that we hope to see present in all of our classrooms. They focus on four target areas, which are content planning, instruction, assessment for learning, and community building. And I would ask the Board's approval of the School Improvement Executive Sumaries for twenty-fourteen, twenty-fifteen.
Move for approval.
Second.
Comments or questions?
Uh, Dr. Smith, is this, is this just a, the second year of the two-year plan? Or is this, because it says here that they, requires development and approval of school improvement plans on a two-year cycle. So, where are we in that cycle?
This would be the first year of that cycle. This, this starts a new cycle for those plans.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Posed, it's approved. Thank you. Item E, North Carolina Pre-K Subcontract for Expansion Funds. Appendix O, Dr. Smith.
Yes, I would ask the Board's approval on the NC Pre-K Contract with the Child Development Center. This is a new site for us, and we're adding eighteen more seats.
Move for approval.
Second.
Questions?
Are the, the money for this, is this our money, or is it, we get it, are we passing it through from the state or federal government?
This is the money from the state, yes.
Okay.
Any other questions? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Posed, it's approved. Thank you. Item thirteen, as our call to the audience for our non-agenda items. We've had some individuals sign up. I would just appreciate your patience. And I would remind everyone that there is a three-minute time limit. And I would appreciate it if the comments, uh, stay on topic and cannot be personal in nature. Okay, thank you. First speaker, Katie Campana.
Hi, I'm Katie Campana. I'm a senior at Ashley High School. And today, I'm here to talk to you about reinstating international travel in our school system. A little background, I'm here, well, my love for travel has, was started when I traveled with my high school peers. Freshman year, we traveled to Beijing, China. And that was like, it was one of those amazing experiences of my life. And that shaped what I want to do in my future. I intend on going to college and studying international business. And I believe that in our school systems, this kind of exposure to culture, the educational benefits that come from it, and the social benefits that come from it are so important. And with reinstating international travel in our school system, I think we will greatly benefit. First off, the educational benefits. The foundation of our education is the Common Core. And part of the, the big things in Common Core are critical thinking and problem solving. The best ways to critical think and problem solve aren't exactly sitting in a classroom, but actually implementing these things. Walking the streets of a different country, exposing yourself to new things is the best way to critical think, to problem solve. You can't, there's no way you can, you just, you never know what you're gonna run into. So, there's always room to solve problems. There's always room to expose yourself. Language, it's a graduation requirement to take at least two courses, language courses, in high school. The best way to learn a language is, I mean, you learn a lot in those two courses. But to really put forth the things you've learned in your knowledge is to expose yourself to different people talking. Specifically, I know we learned Spanish. We learned a dialect, the, like, a Mexican Spanish. But to expose yourself to different kinds of dialects and to different kinds of people, you travel to Spain, you can travel to Argentina, you can travel all over the world. But until we expose ourselves, until we put ourselves in the spot and make ourselves have to speak, we never truly learn. It also brings history and education to life. I know a t, a teacher at my school I interviewed, she told me about how she took her students before international travel was removed. She took her students to Italy. And she said it was the most amazing experience to see her students go, they were walking through Florence. And they read Dante's Inferno previously to traveling to Florence. And they said it was an ama, she was, it was an amazing experience just to see those students just walk through and see, like, understa, they could completely understand the story after seeing the beautiful city and the chapels and the churches. And they could understand why, like, the importance of Dante's Inferno and just the importance. And I know specifically with me, traveling has completely encouraged my love for history. Walking on the Great Wall of China, being able to walk through the Summer Palace, being able to do Tai Chi in the Summer Palace are things that have pushed my love for history. Being able to go to those places and see those things and actually feel and experience what you read about in your textbooks is something that everybody should be able to experience. And I know that it's pushed me to take three AP classes of history and push myself to learn more because I truly do love history. Culturally, we, um, people, you can gain more cul, like, a sense of yourself by traveling when the students took a trip to...
Katie, your three minutes has passed. If you could wrap it up, please.
When the students got to travel to Beijing, China, they got to experience the true life of a Chinese family and sit in the house of, and listen to the stories. But students who miss out on the opportunity to travel abroad, miss out on enriching and life-changing adventure. And I believe by lifting the ban on international travel, students will benefit from educationally, culturally, and socially. Thank you.
Thank you. David Elrod. Is that the student you were talking to? Did David leave? Well, that's a shame. That was concerning a senior project. Rachel Amanda Jordan. This one's a senior project. This is her senior project. Hers did?
Hi. Dear Henover County Schools Board of Education, My name is Rachel Jordan. I have been a part of my high school's striving to achieve excellence program for four years now. And my experience in the program has been nothing short of excellence, obviously, hence the name. And as helpful and supportive as the state program is for students who are enrolled in it like myself, I have noticed that there are many students in my school who could benefit from all that the state program has to offer, but doesn't know anything about the program. That is why I'm here today. I would like to ask you for more funding to increase the number of state teachers throughout all four high schools. The state program prides itself in promoting good habits and ethics, not only to its students, but also to the state teachers as well. Former states, former senior state teacher, Mr. Nick Japina, says that because of his involvement in the state program, he now shows more compassion to his honors classes. He also says that too many, pardon me, sorry. Too many teachers say that certain students shouldn't be in honors classes, but we need their help to build up state student skills and productivity. He also goes on to say that he would like to see state expanded to include more classes. The state teachers who are currently at Hager right now are super supportive and motivate their students like no other teachers do. And my senior state teacher, Ms. Catherine Coleman, first started out as a volunteer in the Avid program. But since she has been promoted to the, as a state coordinator for Hager, she works very hard for her students and doesn't stop at the bare minimum for anyone, whether they're a state student or not. When I asked her if there was anything she would change about the program if she could, she talked about how she wished that the county could support the state program more on a financial level. She also says that she would like to have dedicated teacher positions for the state program so that students could have more flexibility with scheduling. She also says that a big help would be funding the coordinator positions so that coordinators could spend more time planning events, trips, and working with the community. Without the state program, my academic motivation personally would be absolutely nothing compared to what it is now because of teachers like my senior state teacher, Ms. Coleman, and also Mr. Japina. Dedicated teachers like them not only give their students motivation, but confidence. They are the driving force that drives me as a student and also tons of other students. And I know that with more funding to bring in teachers like them to expand the state program will be money well spent. And by providing the state program with more funding, you're providing students with an opportunity that they never imagined possible they could ever have. So, and they definitely won't be able to thank you enough for it. Um, and that's about it. So, I want to thank you all for your time.
Thank you. Uh, next speaker is Michael Odelsberg.
Hello, my name is Michael Odelsberg. I'm the father of two Roland Grice Middle School students. Up till this year, New Henover County Schools have met or exceeded our family's expectations every step of the way. Our family has been enthusiastic supporters of every school teacher and classroom we have come in contact with. As parents, we're heavily involved in, we were heavily involved in Holly Tree Elementary School. And my wife, Tracy, has served as a class mom for two classes each year and a class mom coordinator for four years. When our oldest son, Andrew, transitioned to Roland Grice Middle School, I volunteered as a watchdog, and my wife volunteered as a school, in the school store. Both of our kids participate in school activities. They love to get involved. They look forward to school and have always had strong school spirit. I'm sad to report that this has come to an end. This year, we find ourselves disappointed and somewhat disenfranchised by the school system we have loved for years. We no longer feel like part of the team. This year, we have experienced wholesale changes to our student schedules, core classes, educational model, club system, and probably a few other things I'm not mentioning. There has been no communication from administration prior to many of these changes. And quite frankly, we feel the changes will have a negative effect on our children's education and growth this year. Education is a partnership between the students, teachers, administration, and parents. Everyone is on the same team to make our kids the best they can be. This year, we find ourselves on the sidelines. We're no longer invited to collaborate or partner in our students' education. Parents have tried to communicate and follow the proper change, chains of command since we became aware of changes before this school year even began. Parents have made every effort to communicate with Dr. Pinto, New Henover High, uh, New Henover County Schools, and with the superintendent. We have not received a meaningful, meaningful communication back in return, except a few ambiguous answers using educational terminology and testing results in which we have had to take time to research afterwards. To make matters worse, after we have time to review what we have been told, we find the information is either incorrect, incomplete, or based on predictive models and forecasts. The decisions being made do not seem to be rooted in historical data or actual results. The mission of New Henover County Schools, in collaboration with our parents and the community, is to strive to provide children an excellent education in a safe and positive learning environment where there are, where they are prepared with the critical skills to reach their full potential for a role yet to be imagined. The vision of New Henover County Schools is to have high expectations for all students, to have equity at our schools regarding facilities, services, and staffing, to ensure all students are actively engaged in meaningful learning experiences, provide state-of-the-art learning technology, use data to inform and drive decisions regarding curriculum, instruction, and assessment, and to partner and communicate with businesses, civic, civic, faith-based organizations, parents, and the community at large to enhance the educational opportunities for children. I took those last two things out of the New Henover County policy. I respectfully request that you open up a dialogue with the parents, and we work together as a community to find the best solutions to the problems that we have, that have plagued us so far at Roland Grice Middle School. Thank you.
Thank you. Mary Murray. Next, Judith Gabauer and Sebastian Zagler.
Good evening. My name is Sebastian Zagler, and I'm a sixth grader at Roland Grice Middle School. At last month's board meeting, my mother said the following about Roland Grice. There is no science on the curriculum at all in the fall. This is a major cut in, in instruction time. Dr. Smith responded that the omission of science meant more time for social studies, whereas science will be taught extensively in the spring. Unfortunately, this is not the whole truth for the sixth graders. My handout summarizes the schedule changes. Previously, daily instruction time was three hours and fifty-six minutes for four core classes, math, reading, social studies, and science. Now, there are only three hours and eighteen minutes per day for three core classes. Instead of science, the new schedule includes forty-five minutes of mastery. Elsewhere, mastery teaches topics that are not taught during normal instruction, such as the functioning of the U.S. government. At Roland Grice, however, mastery is poorly implemented. Topics are often broadcasted school-wide to every classroom and student regardless of grade, interest, or ability. Mastery takes up a lot of time. Besides the forty-five minutes at the end of the day, mastery also happens in the morning. Morning mastery can, can take up to twenty minutes of Core One because of technical difficulties with the broadcasting system, High School Q. Content is another concern. Morning mastery includes announcements like, "Today is partly cloudy," and "Let's celebrate National Nachos Day." Afternoon mastery often repeats topics that most students already understand, such as, "Did you know that Google is useful for doing research?" It's important to look at the bigger picture and don't jump to conclusions. Because mastery is so boring, kids play on their iPods, text, or throw pieces of paper at each other. Teachers don't seem to value mastery either, and sometimes turn off the broadcast altogether. Pretty much everyone I know agrees that mastery is a complete waste of time and that we would much rather like to have Core Four back. In summary, I feel disappointed that the school limits my opportunity to learn and grow by cutting instruction time and replacing it with something so utterly useless as mastery. I would like to ask the Board to please help us students at Roland Grice get back to a schedule that is meaningful and fun. Thank you.
Thank you.
Are you sure you're only in the sixth grade? You did a good job.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, can we just give Ms. diploma now?
Excellent presentation. Uh, next, Andrew Odelsberg.
Good evening. I am Andrew Odelsberg, and I am a seventh grader at Roland Grice Middle School. This year has been a lot different than last year. I wanted to share with you a few of the changes that have been taking place at Roland Grice. Student government. Last year, the Student Government Association was in full swing by this time of year. I was part of the association, serving as the school treasurer. This year, I, student government hasn't been mentioned at all. And wouldn't you think that a student government might be beneficial to the principal? A student government could represent the voice of the people, which in this case would represent the students enrolled at Roland Grice. Wouldn't that make our school better? Mastery. At the end of day, at the end of the day, everyone goes back to their homeroom class for mastery. Mastery is an additional period of time dedicated towards a subject. Last year, instead of mastery, we had enrichment at the end of the day. The definition of enrichment is to improve or enhance the quality or value of something. Enrichment time could be used to work on homework, go to the library, or even practice playing your instrument in the band room. You could also talk to your teachers about a subject or term you were having trouble with, and they may be able to help you during this time. You can meet with clubs any day of the week during enrichment because you are bettering yourself at something. But mastery is a graded class, so if you miss it, it could affect your grades for the nine weeks. Doesn't enrichment sound beneficial to the student, than, more beneficial to the student than mastery? P.E. Last year, I took business as an elective and really enjoyed it. I also took band last year, which is a year-round elective. P.E. was only one semester last year, and health took only a, two, to, only took up two and a half weeks. Now, P.E.'s year-long, and as a result, health class has been extended to take up nine weeks of the school year. But if you're in an elective like band, chorus, or orchestra, you don't get the opportunity to, to take any other electives for the rest of the year. Should I have to stop playing my instrument just so I can do art or... for the rest of the year. Should I have to stop playing my instrument just so I can do art or business? Extracurricular activities. This year, extracurricular activities have their own days to meet after school. For example, Science Olympiad meets after school on Mondays. I think this is cool. After, clubs also meet on Fridays during mastery on an A-week, B-week schedule. I participate in Battle of the Books as well as Science Olympiad. But as you get closer to competition, you will need to meet on multiple days after school, and this may cause conflict with other activities. Last year, during enrichment, we could meet as needed. But this year, there is no enrichment period, and since mastery is a graded class, missing it to meet with a club will hurt your grade. Should we be restricted from meeting more often because of a graded class? This concludes my speech. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda, item fourteen, correspondence. Any correspondence, any board members would like to share? Item fifteen, under announcements. The New Hanover County Board of Education will meet for a special meeting on Tuesday, November the eighteenth, two thousand and fourteen, at three PM. The item on the agenda is a closed session pursuant to Wisconsin General Statute one forty-three, three eighteen, point eleven, A one, and one fifteen, C dash four zero two. The next regular meeting of the New Hanover County Board of Education will be held on Tuesday, December the second, two thousand and fourteen, at five thirty, uh, in this room. Next announcement, Aces Parent Forum will be held on November the seventeenth, two thousand and fourteen, from six PM to eight PM at UNCW. And one I added is tomorrow, uh, at three PM, uh, down on the river where the Coast Guard Cutter Diligence is docked. There'll be a dedic, rededication actually of the, uh, the World War One memorial that was on the campus of New Hanover High School. It used to be out in the median there, then it was moved on campus. And through the efforts of retired Navy Captain Wilbur Jones, it has been moved, downtown next to the, there's a park there where the, I think Roland Thunder, they have a war memorial there. And I just, uh, so that will be tomorrow, will be tomorrow at three o'clock. And, uh, I just, at this time, I would like to just thank the county and the city, and Captain Jones and others for, for this, because I think it's going to make a nice presentation downtown. It'll be viewed by many more people and tourists than, than where it was at New Hanover High School. The county paid for the, uh, it looks brand new. The medal was taken off of the memorial and redone, and the whole monument was moved downtown. I, I was down there last night and wanted to, I had not seen it since it's been put there. Because tomorrow, we'll all take part in a rededication and Congressman McIntyre is going to come and take part. So that's tomorrow at three, if you can make it. Any other announcements, anything, anybody would like to add?
January eighth, please mark a date on your calendar. Looking at the legislative long session, that's really the only date that we can work for legislative breakfast. So, and that'll be a morning. We've done lunch and breakfast. We get better attendance from our legislative delegation with the breakfast. So, put that on your calendar early.
January the eighth?
January the eighth.
Eight-thirty. What time do we start?
Eight-thirty?
Typically, we start at eight or eight-thirty.
Eight-thirty.
I'll have to go back and look at last year's, but...
Eight-thirty.
Any other announcements?
Uh, Mr. Hayes, just piggybacking off your announcement, it's fitting tomorrow being Veterans Day. And I think as a board, we, we all want everyone to keep in mind the service of our veterans to this country and as a board, thank all of the veterans and the current lease, people serving in the, in the United States and all to her.
That's why it was so nice to mention what Laney JROTC had done that, because it was on the news. And that was, that was really impressive, because that took some time to do what they did and it was, it meant quite a bit. Anything else?
It is, it is the Marine Corps birthday today.
Yeah.
Oh, how, how can I? Mr. Hans, how have you been able to sit here and control yourself? Did I hear a motion to adjourn?
Second.
All those favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Posed. Thank you. We are adjourned.